Absolutely.
That's good.
Good evening to fellow board members. We've got one board member that's on the way. We told her to take her time. It's a dreary night to be out driving, but thank you to those that are in attendance. Fellow board members, you've had a time, you've had time to review our open session minutes from our last meeting. If there are no changes, I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Motion.
Motion second, all in favor, raise your right hand and the motion carries. Thank you. Everybody's had a chance to review the closed session minutes from our last meeting. If there are changes in that, we will make them during closed session. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, raise your right hand and motion carries. Do we have any additions, additions or deletions to our agenda?
Yes, sir.
All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, raise your right hand and motion carries. All right, moving right on to matters of the public, good news for tonight, Mr. Rice.
Thank you, Mr. Canfield should come on up and our two Rotary Students of the Month, y'all come on. Good evening. It is my pleasure to present with you this month's Rotary Student of the Month. Again, we have Mr. Earl Canfield from the Rotary Club here to assist. First, we have Sierra Carolin. Mr. Rice Snyder had this to say about Sierra. Sierra Carolin is a current sixth grader at Pamlico County Middle School. Sierra's teachers say that she is a consistent example of representing the Canes' matrix. She is caring, accountable, neat, excellent, and demonstrates self-control. Sierra is always respectful to her classmates and peers and gives 110% in all of her classwork. She is a polite young lady and works extremely hard on all of her assignments. She participates in class, asks for help when needed, and is always willing to help others. She represents the middle school in many different avenues such as clubs, sports, and organizations. She's a team player as well as a critical thinker. She doesn't give up and always encourages her classmates to do the same. Congratulations, Pamlico County Middle School Rotary Student of the Month, Sierra Carolin. Next, from Pamlico County High School, we have 12th grader Noah Tiller. Ms. Lanchy had this to say about Noah. We are proud to recognize Noah Tiller this month. Noah's art teacher captured it beautifully. Ms. Bradley shared the following words about Noah. As Noah's teacher this year, I have witnessed firsthand his remarkable dedication to academic excellence, unwavering kindness towards others, a genuine passion for learning. Noah's commitment to his academics is genuinely commendable. He has taken a challenging course load, including AP Art History and Community College courses, demonstrating his willingness to push himself intellectually and academically. In our classroom, Noah actively engages in enriching discussions about art, its history, and its significance within various cultures. His curiosity and enthusiasm for learning are infectious. He is inspiring his peers to delve deeper into the subject. Beyond his academic achievements, Noah is a beloved school community member. He is well-liked by his peers and respected by his teachers. Noah consistently demonstrates kindness and compassion towards others, always willing to lend a helping hand or offer encouragement to those in need. His positive attitude and friendly demeanor create a welcoming and inclusive environment for others around him. Noah's character shines through in everything he does. He is dependable, creative, and a joy to know as a person. Whether collaborating on group projects, participating in extracurricular activities, or simply brightening someone's day with his infectious smile. Noah's presence enriches our school community in countless ways. Congratulations, Pamlico County High School Rotary Student of the Month, Noah Tiller. That is our good news for this evening. Both of our Rotary students have their families here with us tonight and you guys are welcome to stay and enjoy the meeting or feel free to do what's needed.
Again, congratulations to Sierra and Noah. And as Mr. Rice said, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. Or I know you've got school tomorrow, so we'll let you go home if you need to. Thank you.
Oh, I know it does.
Okay, moving on in our agenda, we do not have any public comment tonight, so we're going to move on to Agenda Item Three, our superintendent's report.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening to everyone. Got several, several items to discuss on the superintendent's report, so we'll jump on in. The first thing to bring to your attention is the membership report. Since our last meeting, since the last count, February 26, 2024, Pamlico County Primary School added three students for a total enrollment of 313. Fred Anderson Elementary lost two of 158 students there. And Pamlico County Middle School and Pamlico County High School stayed even, 251 students at the middle school, 430 at the high school, for a grand total of 1,152 students. So we had a positive plus-one gain, so that's good. February was, since we last met, there was a lot of travel involved for me. I went to various meetings and what I would like to do for just a few minutes is share with you what those meetings basically were all about. There were some regional meetings and state meetings, and all of which had a, sort of had a common theme, and we'll get there in just a moment. But the first meeting that I attended was the Southeast Education Alliance Superintendent Council Meeting, and that was at Clinton High School. So Clinton City Schools hosted that. What made that particularly interesting, or particularly something noteworthy, was the Superintendent of Public Instruction was there, Catherine Truitt. She presented plans for a revised performance grade, school performance grade model. And I've got things on the screen we'll share with you, and I've shared various documents with you, but she wrote this out, she made a presentation to us in advance of a presentation to the Education Committee from the House of Representatives and also the State Senate. One thing that she wanted to get across was that the model that we have right now is not very accurate, and that's true. I've got a chart that, Ms. Wendy, if you'll flip down, you can see the next slide right there. Maybe hard to see on the screen, but basically what that is illustrating is North Carolina has a disproportionate number of schools that are D and F. Now, we don't have any D or F schools in Pamlico County. All of our schools rated out at a C this past year. But you can see in elementary schools, only 1.9% of elementary schools were A schools in North Carolina. That's kind of hard to believe. 1.7% of middle schools had a grade of an A, 2.5% of high schools. Now, if you look at the NAEP testing across the board, North Carolina schools, that is a test that compares North Carolina students to students across the country, we largely outperform a lot of the other states. And so the standard that we're using in North Carolina is a little bit deceiving. And so they are proposing some things. One of the things that I thought was interesting, and one of the things that she mentioned, was that we sort of have evolving priorities or values in North Carolina among our stakeholders, and that is another thing that drives us to try to look at fixing this system. So the proposed solution, and that's something I want to make sure I'm clear about tonight, I think it has a good chance of passing, but this right now is proposed, and that is to do a multi-measure model. Right now, we have one letter grade. If you look up North Carolina school report cards, you'll see a report that gives us a grade. And what they're proposing is to give four grades for each school. That next slide, Ms. Wendy will show it. So we have academics, progress, readiness, and opportunity. Those are not any grades assigned, that's just to show you what it would look like. But rather than have one standalone grade, they are looking at putting that in. So academics in this sense would still be how we do on test scores. So proficiency in math, reading, and science, the growth would continue to be the growth model that the EVOs program gives us. So we get a growth score, and again, you know, the way that our grade is calculated now, 80% of our score is proficiency, 20% is growth. And so there wouldn't be this combination formulate, would be an academic score, a growth score, they're calling it progress here, a readiness score, and then an opportunity score. And the readiness would be about post-secondary preparation, career development plans, the four- and five-year graduation rate. And then the opportunity score would be taking into consideration things like chronic absenteeism, school climate, intra- and extracurricular activities. So really looking at how the opportunities that we give the student to prepare for life after high school. And that's the main point of all of this, really, is what will they do when they graduate? And so just wanted to give you a heads up that this is something that's more than likely coming down the line, but they'll be considering that in the upcoming short session, but it has been presented. Next, Mr. Prescott and I actually attended a regional state of educational attainment meeting in Wilmington, and that is a statewide initiative, the same day they were having regional meetings across the state with the emphasis on 2 million by 2030. And what that means, 2 million students or 2 million individuals having earned a credential or a degree and being prepared for workforce in North Carolina. Right now, only about 27% of our graduates in the southeast region will earn a certificate, a credential, or a degree within six years of graduating high school. Two-thirds of North Carolina jobs require an industry credential, and only one-third of our graduates obtain a degree or credential within those six years. And so you put those two things together, you see we've got this gap. And if we're going to have, you know, the jobs and be able to employ our students, we've got to get them ready and get the skills and credentials they need to do that. And so it's not just a Pamlico County initiative, it's a regional and a state initiative, it's something that we want to feel very strongly that's important. So that's another thing. And then lastly, we had a, I was, last week I was in Greensboro and was at a meeting with the North Carolina superintendents and the community college presidents. At that meeting, we discussed the College Career Promise Program. And as you know, we'll hear, we'll call it CCP. CCP program here allows our students to be dual-enrolled. There are students at the high school who are taking college classes and getting college credit. It's a tremendous program. It's amazing, and we want to make sure that that program is not only accessible to our students, but everybody's aware of what it takes to be successful in that program. Later this month, Ms. Dixon, myself, representatives from Pamlico Community College will be meeting to talk about how we can do just that, make those opportunities more accessible and set our students up for success. Because it is a tremendous opportunity, but it's a tremendous responsibility, too. The students need to understand that these are college classes that they're enrolled in, and they have to be approached with the seriousness that that requires. There was also a large discussion about CTE concentrators. You know, that is an emphasis Mr. Carolin presented here last month, and that has been a major point of focus for our CTE program. We went from 99 credentials in '21, '22 to 478 credentials earned last year, and we're on pace this year to have over 500. So we're very pleased with that, and we really want all of our students to have that opportunity to earn a credential. So really trying to wrap up four days of meetings in five minutes, and so I don't know how well I've done, but essentially, where does this leave, what does this mean for Pamlico County schools? It means that our direction, our focus, they're spot-on. We are where we need to be, I believe. I think we're well-positioned to do well with any proposed changes to the report card. I think that it will, there will be some growing pains and some transitional things that we'll have to get through, but I think that seeing the whole picture, it's not just how they perform one day in their life on a test, but how they're performing every day, I think that's important, too. And I think so, we will be well-positioned to do that. And our focus continues to be on preparation of our students for life after graduation. I heard it said, and it's true, you know, we're not wanting our third graders, what they're doing this year is not preparing them for fourth grade, it's preparing them with the foundational skills they need to be successful when they graduate high school. The end result is not to be a college student, the end result is to be an employed individual, and if your career path takes you to college, then that's great. If your career path takes you to the military or, you know, community college, wherever, we want you to be prepared. And that's our mission in Pamlico County schools, to be prepared to either be employed, enlisted, or enrolled in higher education, and so feel good about that. So going to those meetings really helped to center things, but I thought it was important to share with you where I've been and what I've been up to in the past few days, because there has been some travel involved. At this point, talk to you a little bit about something, and as Ms. Katie Brown comes up, she's going to bring an update to you from the Teacher Advisory Council. We had our first meeting of the council this past month, and as you recall, we wanted to do this to give our teachers a voice and an opportunity to share their insight into the direction of the district. And Ms. Brown, our Teacher of the Year, is chairing that group, and she'll be bringing every other month, coming up and giving us an update on the work of the council. Ms. Brown.
Hi, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Like Dr. Johnson said, our goal for the Teacher Advisory Council is to collaborate with other schools, admin, and board, and kind of bridge that gap between all of the schools and be able to kind of give you guys a voice from the teachers. So just to give you guys a recap from our first meeting, which happened on Wednesday, February 7th, our first meeting was with all of the teachers in the council, Dr. Johnson and Ms. Dixon, and we discussed the calendar and data after a brief welcome and congratulations from Dr. Johnson. Ms. Dixon and Dr. Johnson gave us kind of a little bit of homework and told us to try and come up with a district calendar. And she provided us a website where we can see all of the laws that kind of go into creating that calendar. We got a skeleton where Ms. Dixon handed us that schedule and said, here, you guys come up with a calendar. And we were all kind of like, oh, no, oh, no, that's all y'all. So just kind of like to prove that you guys are trying to work on that calendar and come up with something for the district and just showing how hard it actually truly is, just getting that skeleton and everything that goes into that. We also talked about coming up with an application for additional tech members. We talked about some additional questions to include on that application, and we created a Google document which all of the tech members plus Dr. Johnson and Ms. Dixon are in and have the access to edit that. And we got a lot of good feedback for questions on that application, so hopefully, once that goes out to the teachers in the district, we'll get a lot of really good applicants for potential members. Some positive celebrations, which I know you guys probably remember me talking about at the last meeting, one of our goals is to also celebrate the positives, and we had a lot of really good celebrations that were happening in the district. Spring concert is happening on March 14th. We talked about a new music teacher, which was added to the district, which has been amazing. I know my daughter at the primary school, she absolutely loves the new music teacher. That has been the favorite part of her week, coming home over the last couple of weeks, talking about the new music teacher. The art teachers shared that each of them at the four schools received $200 from the women's club to kind of use for whatever they felt was needed for their classes. Students also had their artwork displayed for view by the public at the women's club, which I thought was really cool, that I saw on Facebook a whole lot of our students had really cool artwork, definitely better than I can do. Our middle school has started a soccer team, they've had quite a few games. At this point, they have won two of their, I believe, five games, which is awesome for a first-time soccer team coached by Coach Knox and Deputy Angelo. We have taken our middle-of-the-year screeners and also our second check-ins for both math and ELA and also eighth-grade science. And I am really excited to report that sixth grade, for sure, has shown positive growth on the middle-of-the-year screeners and those second check-ins, very exciting stuff. Primary school had shared with us that geodes that were purchased were being utilized by the primary school teachers in a very successful manner. Fred Anderson discussed that they were really happy with the looping of the teachers with students as being very beneficial for their students and teachers alike. They were able to build a lot of positive relationships with their students, and a lot of positive growth was also being noticed based on that looping. Some of the requested agenda items from the teachers were added to the Google Doc. Like I said, there's a running doc for all members, and we discuss confidentiality as well, so it's nice to know that we can have these conversations in closed doors, get some information and feedback from Dr. Johnson and Ms. Dixon, and know that when we share it with y'all, we know that it's going to be coming from a positive viewpoint. And that is all that I have from our meeting from February, unless you all have any questions.
I have a question. How many members do you, how many teachers do you have on your council now?
As of right now, I believe, is it eight? Is it eight, Dr. Johnson?
Right now, yes, ma'am.
And we're looking to add one more from each school.
So you have three from each school?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
That's great, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Really can't say enough good and positive things about them. They are a great group of teachers to sit in a room with, have great energy and a great discussion, and it's just refreshing to hear things, all the positive things. That was one of the things they wanted to do, was to bring a positive report. That's not something, all right, y'all dig around and try to come up with something good to say, it wasn't hard to do. It was good, because there are great things happening in Pamlico County schools, so thank you again, and we'll be meeting, the next meeting of the Teacher Advisory Council will be in April, and then Ms. Brown will be back in May to give you an update. At this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Henry Rice to come up and give us an update on our new school.
I'll be quick today. Schedule update, we're down to the third piece. On Friday, the construction documents were submitted to the DPI and given to us and also to the county here for review. I looked at them this morning, and there's upwards of 3,000 pages of stuff in those documents.
He's been reading fast, so just.
So hopefully, we'll have those back by June 18th. They did say at the Department of Insurance that there was two new ones ahead of us plus four recent middles, so we're in line. The rest of it's still the same, like it has been, pretty much, I've been waiting now until June 18th gets here. We will be talking about some other things. The next one, I think I'll have some security information to talk to you guys about, so that'll be interesting. Baseball field update, the documents for that piece of the construction will be end of this month, on March 22nd, so that's coming right around the corner, too. And then the $12 million grant that we applied for, that's for people that haven't started the construction yet. Unofficially, we've been approved. Dr. Johnson had a text message from the State Superintendent, you want to tell them about it?
Sure. One of the positive products of going to these meetings, I said I was at a meeting with Catherine Truitt, we were able to have a conversation, and she had not left that meeting very long. Basically, she came, she gave her spiel, she answered a few questions, and then she was off to the next meeting. But I'm assuming she was riding with someone, because it hadn't, it was not too much after she left that I got a text asking about, had we applied for the $12 million, which I said yes, and we desperately need. And she said, basically, if anybody asks, we're going to do everything we can to get you the $12 million by October. She wanted to know when we were breaking ground, so that felt pretty good. That was good. We don't have an official letter saying you've got it, but I've got a text message that I will, that I will, exactly. So we'll keep that, and, but I feel good about that, and so I appreciate Mr. Rice again for leading our endeavors with the new school. There is something, quite literally, every day, he meets weekly with the architect, and those meetings and the frequency will continue to go to increase as we get closer to groundbreaking. We were actually talking about that a little bit earlier in the week, so that's going to be pretty exciting to think about breaking ground on this school.
I'm learning a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. All right, just a few miscellaneous items, and we're going to ask our principals to bring a report. First, the board retreat, we mentioned that last, last meeting. Since then, it's come to our attention that the Booster Club Gala is the same day, it's the 20th, as our tentative plan, so I don't know what your pleasure is, if y'all want to look at a reschedule or what, but that'll be up to you all. Any thoughts on that tonight?
I know we discussed this at our Friday pre-meeting, and I think it would, it would be a show, definitely show of support, you know, for the Booster Club and everything they do to not conflict with the gala and any board members that might be going to that, so we looked at moving it to, or suggesting to move it to the following weekend, which I think is the 29th, 26th and 27th.
Yeah.
Of April. Is that, would that fit in your schedule?
Works better for me.
Works better for you, okay.
So I'm not complaining if you move it to then, but I will work it out whenever works for the board members.
So if everyone can look at their calendars, I know I'm putting you on the spot for the 26th and 27th, it'll work for me. I think Kathy just shook her head, it'll work for her. Gene? This side of the room?
Undecided.
Undecided. You can check and let us know. How about you, Eric? Not sure yet.
I've got something going on, but we'll talk about it.
Okay. But just let me know this weekend, but right now, we'll tentatively say we're going to do it on the 26th and 27th pending hearing from everyone on the board.
All right. Have something else exciting to share with you all. We need you all to complete Conflict of Interest training, and that is, surely will be a good time. So we are looking at, we have a scheduled, Ms. Potter, she can give you the Cliff Notes version.
$20 on share.
But the, we'll be having a special called budget meeting. I want to say there's two of them actually on the calendar, one from the 11th and one I want to say there's two of them actually on the calendar, one from the eleventh and one on the twenty-fifth of this month. I talked to Mr. Gibbs and Mr. Prescott and thought we might be able, on one of those days, if your schedule allowed, just have you all come in at three o'clock on that day, and we'll sit down and do that training together. It'll take a couple of hours, then we'll, then we'll have our budget meeting. Any thoughts on that? I can't believe y'all are not just jumping and say, yes, two hours of Conflict of Interest training. Sounds great to me, but in all seriousness, we do need to do it before April third.
And you said it's two hours?
It's around two hours.
So the, the meeting is scheduled to start at, for the special call board meeting budget workshop, to start at five. So that would mean if we could start around three on one of those Monday afternoons?
Is there an alternative option if some of us couldn't make it at...
We can, we can work with you. Yes, sir. No problem.
So is this training that will be presented by a trainer?
No, ma'am, it's like a webinar through the school, the...
NCASA.
NCASA, the School Administration Association. So it's, it's, it's something that you could do singularly, or we can do it collectively together.
Is there any advantage to doing it collectively as a group?
Ms. Riehl, no, I was going to say... Just, just up to, just up to y'all, just we can have discussion together. Yes, ma'am.
So we, we could say on the eleventh or twenty-fifth at three, those who, I guess we'd want to head count of who could make that. And then if the, if some of you, if it's going to conflict with your work schedule, then we could arrange where the link could be sent, and you could do the training on your own.
So the training is about two hours?
Yes, ma'am.
And then the budget meeting is another hour?
Yes, ma'am.
And the training, you said the training had to be completed by April...
By April third, by legislative. Yes, sir.
I can come either of those days.
I can be here.
So we're definitely meeting the eleventh and the twenty-fifth? Yeah, we're going to be meeting on the eleventh and the twenty-fifth at five. So we will be here for that, for those budget workshops. So if you could make it at three, then everybody, you can do it here. We can have like a light dinner and then go into our budget meeting. So I'm going to let everybody just kind of peruse your calendars and then...
Is one of the budget meetings longer than the other?
I don't think so.
Either one's fine with me.
Okay, just kind of look at your calendars, and before the end of the meeting tonight, we'll try to finalize which one of those dates will work.
Okay, that sounds, sounds good. And again, we can, if you have a conflict with either date, both dates, we can, we'll work with you. It's not the, the end of the world, I promise. Alright. Okay, if there's nothing else on that, the last thing, we are going to participate, or try to participate in Bring Your Legislator to School Day this year. That's on April fifteenth. Ms. Harwick is working on contacting, has actually sent in our form submission. We're going to try to get Senator Sanderson down here and talk to him about some of the needs of the county and our school district. And so we are looking forward to that. So I'll give you more details about that as that date gets closer. And hopefully, he'll be able to, to attend and come down. But we're excited about that opportunity. Alright, at this time, I'm going to ask our principals to come in, come up and deliver a quick report. Ms. Savannah Alexander, Principal Pamlico County Primary School. You're first.
Good evening, everyone. Like Dr. Johnson said, my name is Savannah Alexander. I'm the principal at the primary school. And as always, we have lots going on at PCPS. Right now specifically is Read Across America Week. So we have our Spirit Week going on. We're doing lots of things to celebrate just the love of reading and stories at our school. We have some guest readers throughout the week. We're doing some giveaways for some books and raffles, and teachers are celebrating in their own ways. But lots of excitement going on now at PCPS. On March nineteenth, that's a Tuesday night, I'd like to invite you all to come to our Title One Family Math Night. We are excited to be doing a math night. We feel like we focused a lot on reading over the last couple of years, and we're kind of shifting gears. We've been doing some professional development with our teachers and some vertical alignment surrounding some priority math standards. And so we'll be focusing on sharing some strategies and fun activities with families that night. Our PTO is providing a spaghetti dinner that's actually going to be catered by the culinary classes at the high school. So we're excited for that collaboration, but it should be a great night. And we'd love for you all to attend if you're available. We have pre-K and kindergarten registration coming up. That's April thirtieth. We're doing something a little different this year. We're going to have a cookout from five o'clock to seven o'clock. Our sit team really talked about wanting to do something to get the kids excited about starting kindergarten at the primary school and really their whole journey with Pamlico County Schools. So we are excited to do something a little different this year. We're going to do hamburgers and hot dogs, have bubbles and chalk, do it out on the playground. So we're just excited to kind of start a new tradition and get some excitement going for kindergarten at PCPS. We are wrapping up our third-quarter conferences. It was a school goal for all of our teachers to meet with all of our families at least twice this school year. And we have almost accomplished that goal. We have families coming in and out all day long at all hours of the day. But we feel like really communicating our expectations and building those relationships with families will pay off. And there's nothing like sitting down at the table across from parents to really get on the same page regarding their student and their success at school. So those have been going really well. Other than that, we have celebrated so many appreciation days. SRO, counselor, this week is social worker day. And we're just so grateful to have those positions in our schools and don't know what we'd do without them. Other than that, we are just continuing to have a focus on teaching and learning at the primary school. Our kids have already shown so much growth since August, and we're just excited to see where we end up at the end of the year. And I apologize, I'm very out of breath these days. We would love to see you guys at any of our events coming up. There's lots going on, but thank you for all that you do for us in our schools. We appreciate you as well.
Thank you.
And what, and what time?
Four to six thirty.
Alright, Ms. Carter Moore.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Sharon Carter Moore. For those of you who do not know me, I am the principal at Fred Anderson Elementary School. And I am out of work for different reasons these days, so bear with me. I'm excited to share with you some of the achievements and highlights that have happened at our building. First, I want to just say thank you to our parents, our dedicated teachers, and our shining stars. Because it's them, their hard work, their dedication, and they are truly the driving forces behind what makes us a success. So thank you. Our students are all geared up for our third-quarter NC check-ins. I am confident that their dedication and hard work will shine through, and let us continue to uplift them and encourage them to do their best. A round of applause to our twenty-three, twenty-four spelling bee champion, Ms. Pearl, and all the participants. I'm so proud of them and their hard work and their sportsmanship. There are some students on the stage who, they had to sit there the entire time through all of the spelling and cheered each other on. I was so proud of that, almost more than their spelling. So kudos to them. Likewise, for our Battle of the Books team, they are gearing up for an exciting month of competition. They're going to compete against each other in March, within the school building. And also, they're going to compete on the regional stage in April. So good luck to them. They've been working hard, so I'm very proud of them regardless of the results. I'd like to extend a special thank you to our music teacher that we share with the primary school, Ms. Dawn Wilkson. She is truly a force to be reckoned. She has volunteered her time and has created an FAA All-Star Chorus. The kids meet every Monday. And just today, today's a long rainy, dreary day, but those sounds of those kiddos just piercing through the hall was heartwarming. And I thank her for all of her efforts. I'd also like to thank Mr. Durham for his collaboration at the high school. He donated all of the recorders for all of our fifth-grade students. So she's excited to get to work with our fifth graders. And this is a little plug-in, right now, she is trying to work hard to secure some reading, music books for our fifth graders. So let's work with her as she works hard to secure those funds. Looking ahead, we are eagerly anticipating our Title One Night on March twelfth, from five to six thirty. We are calling it our digital literacy. There's been a lot of conversations about literacy and how we use it and the controversy, too much, too little. But we want to take some time to address that as a school and show our parents and community how we use technology in the building, how we take what's on the screen. And we still have to use our old-fashioned paper and pencil to make it make sense. And so we want to share our resources and some of our strategies to our families. In closing, I just want to say, may we continue to work together, support one another, and inspire these young minds to reach their full potential. Thank you. Have a good evening.
And what time does your Title One Night begin?
It's going to start, I think I said, five to six thirty. CIS community and schools is helping us with this, and they are providing pizza and refreshments for our families.
Any other questions? Alright, have a good evening.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Ross Snyder.
Good evening. I'm Wade Ross Snyder, the principal at the middle school. And as a first-year principal, I feel like the fall was very, very busy. However, I look at our calendar for the spring, and there's almost an event each and every day. So stay up to date with our calendar and our Facebook. Like Ms. Brown alluded to earlier, our teachers are analyzing all of the data from the middle-of-the-year screeners and our check-ins, and sixth grade has shown some growth. We are very proud of them. Ms. McCandless from the high school is coming to the middle school every Wednesday to get our eighth-grade students ready for that transition between middle school and high school. And we will tour the high school on Friday, March twenty-second. I know a lot of our students are very much looking forward to that. And they are switching their mindset from the middle school to the high school. Ms. Rothers will be taking several eighth-grade students to present at the National Day of History on March twenty-first, and that will be at ECU's campus. Skills USA did a tremendous job at their regional rally on Friday that was held in Fayetteville. Sixteen students attended, and they brought home twenty-one medals. I wouldn't name them all, but I don't want to leave anyone out. Wrestling finished very strong in the conference as well. We had four champions, four silver medalists, and five students who placed third. Basketball finished in early February. It was a great season that concluded in the first round of the conference tournament for both the boys and the girls. Soccer started like Ms. Brown alluded to earlier, and our kids are doing very well. We have one more home game, and that game will be on March nineteenth. We play over here at the high school, so I'd like to welcome you guys all to attend. It's a great first season back. The kids are learning how to play with each other. The coaches are getting a groove going, and I hope it's something that we can continue. Baseball and soulfall both start tomorrow. I hope those fields dry out. There's been a lot of rain, and I'd like to see them play their first home game against Bath, and then we will travel to Bath on Thursday. Track practice started today, and our first meet will be after spring break. We had two band students that auditioned for All-State Band, which is a huge accomplishment. The Art Club and STEM is hosting a Paint the Tows Night on March eighteenth, which I heard was a big hit last year. Our spring Title One Night will be in conjunction with our talent show on Tuesday, April sixteenth. So it's a little whiles away, but it'll be the book fair, Title One Night, and then at the end, we will do a talent show, and the talent show will start at six. Lastly, Sherry Hale presented at the NCACTE Spring Professional Development Seminar on Problem-Based Solving in the Classroom. And then Beth Sanderson, who's a seventh-grade math teacher, was awarded the Teaching of Excellence Award and recognized at the NCASCD Conference in Pinehurst last night. As always, please feel free to stop by at any time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ross Snyder. Last but not least, Ms. Lanchy.
Good evening, board members. Good evening. I'm Becky Lanchy, the principal at the high school. In keeping consistent with my previous reports, I'm going to share a little bit from the three As with you all. So I'm going to start with academics. It's really hard to believe that we are almost at the end of quarter three. Like, the school year has just really flown by. We are in the throes of testing right now. Ms. Potter is busy, busy. We just finished ACT testing with our juniors, and this week, we are starting spring work keys testing. And she's done a phenomenal job with organizing and just ensuring that all of that runs really smoothly. So I'm very appreciative to her. Our college advisor, Ms. Rachel Wayne, she has done a phenomenal job with our seniors this year. At this point in the school year, she's met one-on-one with ninety-eight percent of our seniors to talk about post-graduation planning. And while her, you know, while she does focus on college quite a bit, she does work with them on other post-graduation plans as well. At this point, fifty-three of ninety-five seniors have submitted at least one or more college applications, which is awesome. They've started really working on FAFSA. And then right now, her current focus is on trade school and community college applications. What I love about Ms. Wayne, though, is she has really, really pushed our students past what they perceive to be their own limitations. And we have kids going after goals that I don't think at the beginning of the year they started with. So that's just really awesome, and I think important to share. Our Skills USA members, I know Ms. Ross Snyder shared this. We had several students, I'm not sure the exact number of students, but attend the regional competition. We have two students that are representatives on the, they're regional officers. And I think there's only six total regional officers, and two of them are from our school. And that's Wyatt Johnson and Quamori Miller, super proud of them. We brought home twelve competition placements, and those are in a variety of different areas, ranging from carpentry to culinary to photography to architectural design. Our ROTC, I know that this is, you're probably thinking, I thought we were talking about academics. Well, our NJROTC's academic team is actually going to Nationals in April. April twentieth is when they compete, so we are super proud of them as well. In the arts, our Evening with the Arts event is planned for March fourteenth, and it begins at five forty-five. And this is really a collaborative effort. Our culinary program, Spanish, band, chorus, and of course, our art classes are all working together. And we're even going to have some collaboration with the lower schools. But the theme this year is My America Is, and it will be followed by the Music in Schools Concert at seven o'clock. Caroline Rose represented our school auditioning for All-State Band in Winston-Salem this past weekend, so we're very proud of her. Last, for athletics. So we are still in basketball. If you have not seen, both our boys and our girls teams advanced to the third round of playoffs, which is tomorrow. They are both playing away. The boys will be at Washington, and our girls will be at Perquimans. Super excited. We're, fingers crossed, we hope that they advance to the next round. We've also, at the same time, we're in the swing of spring sports, which I feel like we have multiple events throughout the week. This week, maybe a little touch and go because of the weather. But softball's off to an undefeated season so far. I'm feeling really hopeful about a state championship. And then baseball is really, they've played some close games, and they're showing a lot of promise as well. Those kids have been working very, very hard. Track and golf has also begun, but they do not start competing until next week. Our Winter Sports Banquet is planned for March twenty-eighth, at six o'clock PM, and that'll be at the auditorium. And I don't want to sit down without mentioning, this week, I know Mrs. Alexander mentioned it's School Social Worker Week. And I just want to give a shout-out to Mrs. Kelly Williams. She is, she's just a wonderful human. She pours a lot into our students. And, I mean, we have kids that show up to school that without her efforts, they may not otherwise be there. She's partnering with families, she's making home visits, she's advocating for us to get additional school-based therapy resources. She's just truly wonderful, and she's very behind the scenes, so she doesn't often, you know, get a lot of credit. So I just wanted to shout her out and thank her for all the work that she does for our school. And that's all I've got for you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lanchy. Well, we've taken a little time during this superintendent report, but I hope we can all... report, but I hope we can all agree that there are great things happening in Pamlico County schools. I appreciate the principals sharing, uh, the reports. We always look forward to hearing that. Um, just good things happening, and we're not finished yet. We've got, uh, a little over fifty, um, days of school left before we start, uh, testing, and so we're gonna finish strong, but, uh, I appreciate everybody and all of you for what you do. Um, this time, the superintendent's report, we're all done. Do any board members have anything you'd like to share before we move on?
Well, I hope that it, it, um, it goes without saying, but doesn't it sound good just to say thank you, to know that you are much appreciated, and even extending the invitation to all of us to be present at some of your programs, and also shouting out the people that are making a difference. Thank you for all that you do. You are much appreciated. Woo-woo.
I agree, um, Ms. Helen, and, and I just wanted to say, I have the, the best feeling about our schools, um, for many, many years. Um, this year seems like a wonderful year. So much going on, great things, and our students are just excelling. It's, it's wonderful. It's a great thing. Thank you to the principals and, and all your team, yes.
Any other board members? All right. And again, thank you to all the principals. Um, one comment I'll make to our board members, I don't do Facebook, but I just have Facebook, and one of the things I like seeing is, is all the stuff that's going on. The Skills USA, I think you're probably responsible for a lot of that. You're doing a great job.
Yes, thank you.
From FFA, Skills USA, sports, you name it, you can stay up to date on, on the school's, um, Facebook page with what's going on. Um, so outstanding, a lot of good things happening. All right, with that, we're gonna move on to our consent agenda. Uh, everybody's had the chance to review all these. We've got quite a few. If we need to remove or, uh, take any of those out and vote on them individually, we can. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Motion.
Second. Motion is second. All in favor, raise your right hand, and motion carries. Thank you. All right, we do not have anything for instruction tonight. Um, we're gonna move on to finance with our new finance director, Ms. Altman.
Good evening, board members. I just have to say, as my first meeting following the schools is very intimidating, especially when we're gonna talk about something so exciting as our audit firm. But I, I appreciate the opportunity to be here with you tonight. Um, as you're aware, um, Mr. Steve Curtis had conveyed to you that your prior audit firm was no longer able to continue to do the audit for Pamlico County schools. So a request for proposals was submitted out in January. Um, we did receive quotes from two firms, and those documents are attached in your assembly, um, both complete copies from both firms. Um, I also included at your seats a bid, a bid summary, which includes a table that shows you the price per year based on the auditing services of the two firms. Um, I would like to, um, make a recommendation to the board, um, that you choose the firm of Anderson Smith &amp; White for your auditor. And the reason behind this, I have a couple of reasons. The first is that I have previous experience working with Forvis, and Forvis is a great company. They're very reputable. But in my past experience working with them, communication was an issue from time to time. And when issues come up that can be addressed during the year, I would rather know that in advance than wait until later in the process of the audit. If they find things, I would like that communication to start early. And I do believe that that is part of the qualities of a good firm and a good auditing relationship. Um, second, I just want to point out that the firm of Anderson Smith &amp; White, I mean, their reputation stands out across the state. They currently complete seventy-five of the one hundred and fifteen school system audits across the state. They have very large districts to very small districts. And so I called several of their references today, and some of the wording that I received back from them, um, was Anderson Smith &amp; White is phenomenal to work with. Their methods of pulling information for the audit is much more efficient than any other firm that I have worked with. Um, ASW is very responsive to questions from staff. Um, they work with their clients to ensure that finance staff are very well educated. Um, they, um, also are extremely thorough, uh, thorough in their work and very knowledgeable. They are professional and timely. Um, and in my experience, I have worked with a school system for over thirteen years, and I have been to numerous conferences that have been offered by NCAASBO. One of the trainers that is always there is a representative from Anderson Smith &amp; White, and they train on everything from sales tax to payroll to software to, you know, North Carolina state law. Um, so my recommendation, looking at these two companies, I realize that the bids are very close, and that one of the bids includes out-of-pocket travel and the other does not, but I feel like the service level that you're going to receive from Anderson Smith &amp; White would be well worth choosing that company over Forvis LLP. So is there anything that I can answer for you that I have not presented to you tonight to help you make your decision?
Just out of curiosity, is it, um, the, a three-year contract that we're entering, so we'll look for an audit firm every three years?
Yes, sir. You can, or you can extend if you're satisfied with the current firm.
Any other questions? I think your presentation was very well and, and have made a good recommendation. Uh, with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve, uh, the selection as presented.
Motion.
Second. Motion is second. All in favor, raise your right hand, and motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving on to one of the hot topics, as always, our draft calendar for next school year.
Good evening, everyone. Um, as Ms. Brown mentioned, we have been working diligently to draft a calendar for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Um, as you noted, we met with the Teacher Advisory Committee and got some feedback from them. Uh, we also sent out a survey to our teachers, um, in all four of the schools, and I think Dr. Johnson has included some feedback from that survey, um, in your board packets. Ninety-eight staff members responded to the survey, and overwhelmingly, um, they selected to look at a calendar that very similarly mirrored this year's calendar ending first semester at Christmas break. Um, we also used our parent advisory committee to survey parents. Um, those members attended PTO meetings, they met with SIT teams, they met with their community friends and partners, and gave us some feedback. And while we know that we were not able to hear from every single parent for our school system, the feedback that we did get, I think, is also included in your board packet, and they, um, spoke also in favor of ending the semester at Christmas break, um, citing things like it was a clean break for the students, it was a clean break for the teachers, it was, um, able to enjoy the holiday with families without the looming pressure of testing, um, coming back. And I think our first semester test scores speak for themselves, um, for what we were able to accomplish. Um, knowing that we will need to be a little more intentional with some of our planning and scheduling for next year and looking at second semester, we're already working with Ms. Lanchy and the high school staff to, um, see what scheduling would look like if we were to go with this draft calendar that you have presented. But just to give you some information, this first draft calendar for twenty-four, twenty-five, um, mirrors the twenty-three, twenty-four calendar and ends first semester at winter break. We would have a seventy-nine day first semester and a one-hundred-and-one day second semester for a total of one-hundred-and-eighty instructional days. This calendar meets all of those fund legislative requirements that Ms. Brown mentioned. Um, we sat down and make sure we had the two-hundred-and-fifteen total days for staff, eleven holidays, ten annual leave days, the nine required work days. We actually have fifteen workdays built into this calendar for our teachers this year, and six of those are optional. Because of our time that we go to school each day, we actually exceed the required one-thousand-twenty-five instructional hours with this calendar for a total of one-thousand-eighty instructional hours, which puts us, if we calculate it, nine days to the good, as we like to say, if we choose to go with this calendar. So in the event that we have one of those, um, events that we shall not mention, we would have a couple of days that we could catch our breath before we would have to start looking at things like making up time. So this calendar is presented to you tonight as a first draft. Uh, Dr. Johnson and I will be happy to answer any questions that you might have, um, based on what we presented with you tonight.
Uh, would you happen to know the, the volume of parents who, um, took part?
We have eleven parents on the Parent Advisory Committee. Now, all of them participate in the meeting present, but that survey was sent to all of them electronically. And then most of the reporting that we got back was from the parents that were in the room who had attended certain events. So I don't have an exact number because I don't know how many people were at the PTO meetings or the SIT meetings that they attended. Um, but we know it is, it is not a overwhelming representation, um, but that was the council that we chose to use for feedback from our parents. You can say it, look, you can say it.
We just really, like, the group that we are, we, we literally just talk to all the other parents, especially, you know, usually, PTO meetings, it's usually the same group, but even though we're the only same group that attends PTO meetings, we still talk to all the other parents in the community, kids' boards. Um, and for all of us that were there, we all had the same, oh, come on, response that it was a much better system any before Christmas.
I'll say-
There's a real number, I guess, if you have, there's no rule.
I'll say I had a good conversation with Ms. Lanchy Friday afternoon at the baseball game, and we discussed pros and cons and, you know, the good parts, the bad parts, but, you know, my last question, which, which calendar works best for the high school? And I think she overwhelmingly agreed that the calendar that's presented is, is the best plan, and I think they are looking at, and you can speak if you want to, but looking at scheduling and EOC and, and being, you know, learning from the first year to make this next year better.
Yeah, I mean, there are definitely things that we can take from this year. This, this year was a, was a first. We hadn't, we hadn't tried anything like this before. Uh, from a test results, you know, we were nearly perfect as far as students passing. There were just a couple, uh, just a few that, that did not, um, score proficient on the, on the EOC. Now, having said that, we're gonna work towards a more balanced approach next year, because there's, we're real EOC-heavy, uh, this, uh, this semester we're in right now. Um, but this semester we're in right now is a hundred-plus days, so, um, you know, that's, that's another thing to consider. So it's, uh, certainly been a, a learning experience, but, you know, there are no unanimous, um, uh, opinions. We're eighty-five-plus percent, um, uh, in favor of it from our teachers, with ninety-eight teachers responding to that. That's district-wide. Now, one of the things, obviously, the, the high school is the one that's really driving this, because the high school's the one that really, um, stands to, to lose or gain the most from when we choose to end that semester. If we end the semester before Christmas, it's got a lot of benefits to it, but it's, it's shortening the, the semester. Um, I, I noted in, in your board packet that, uh, we were sure, we, um, made sure to ask, did you have an EOC? Were you the teacher of an EOC course? Um, because those are the, the ones where they're having to take that, that state exam. Um, ten teachers responded, um, and nine said they preferred, uh, to end it before Christmas, just like we did. So ninety percent of those who taught an EOC course also were in favor of, uh, ending before Christmas. So we bring that to you, uh, just as a means of sharing with you exactly what, um, what the teachers are thinking, and really so that we can make an informed decision, uh, as we look to, you know, whether, whether or not you want to approve this calendar or not.
And, and I'll say, uh, just to be transparent, I, I've been approached, um, and I, I wouldn't be able to defend parent participation, because that's one of the things that they, um, hung a hat with in terms of, um, the new calendar, so-
I understand, to- totally. And, and, you know, that's, that's why we felt it so important to ask, um, I mean, put it, put it out to all the teachers, um, and really, uh, leverage our Teacher Advisory Council, or our Parent Advisory Council, excuse me, to, um, to help us make a decision.
Any other questions on this? Um, so as Ms. Dixon did mention, this, this can be a first draft, or we can approve it tonight. Uh, I, I fully support the calendar, and I think it would probably help in scheduling, um, the schools to get their scheduling started, knowing that they've got a calendar approved for next year. So with that being said, I'll be glad to entertain a motion to approve the calendar as presented.
So moved. Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Gibbs.
Okay. I move that the Pamlico County Board of Education entered into closed session to consider confidential student matters as provided in North Carolina General Statute one-four-three, three-one-eight-point-one-one, A-one, and the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act twenty, USC twelve-thirty-two-G, and GS one-fifteen-C, four-oh-two. Confidential personnel matters as provided in NCGS one-four-three-dash-three-one-eight-point-one-one, A-one-five-and-six, and one-fifteen-C-dash-three-nineteen, and to consult with the Board of Education Attorney in order to preserve their attorney-client privilege as provided in General Statutes one-four-three-dash-three-one-eight-point-one-one, A-three.
All right, have a motion to have a second.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, two motions in one second. Uh, all in favor, raise your right hand. All right. We're in closed session, seven-oh-seven. Thank you to every- Thank you to everyone.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Alright, motion carries. Need a motion to approve out of district students as presented?
Motion.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Alright, motion carries. Review of our next meeting dates, training and board events. I've heard some comments on the, where's my notes at? For the conflict of interest. Which date is looking like, I think I heard Ms. Dunbar say March 25th would work best.
That's just for me, I mean.
I'm good with March 25th. I think I remember Mr. Dudley shaking his head. If we can make it on the March 25th, we'll plan at three. If you cannot make it, then make sure you communicate with Dr. Johnson so you can be set up where you can view the training on your own.
Yeah, if you can't make it on the 25th, that's, it'll be okay. We'd love for you to be here and we do it together. Like I said, just so we can have a conversation and, you know, we can talk about some of this information. But if you, if you can't do it, I can give you a link and you can do it on your own.
Alright. So, March 25th, three o'clock, if you can make it. The special budget meeting will begin at five. And Tiffany will send reminders out for us on that.
That's for that conflict of interest.
And then the other thing, if you can get, if y'all can get back with me, maybe this week on the, the board retreat for the 26th, 27th. I know we keep having them to make adjustments, but we'll find a time that it'll work in everybody's schedule. So be looking at your schedules for 26th and 27th and drive, Eric shaking his head no.
I know I can't.
Okay, alright. We'll continue to look.
I've got to let you know.
We'll continue to look at dates, so we'll make it happen.
26th and the 20th, take that weekend off.
Yeah, let's take that off. I want, everybody needs to be there. So, I'm trying to think of best way to.
Just FYI, if you try to go in the first week of May, I can't do it.
Okay, alright.
What about the 12th, the weekend before?
Let's see.
We can't do that. We have our, our firm retreat is the 12th and the 13th. So, we, I wouldn't have people to.
So now we're looking at May?
And.
Where, where were we holding this up?
We were gonna try to do it at a place in Rocky Mount, but if that is gonna be an issue as far as travel and stuff, we could have a, we have done it before we could do a two-day retreat here.
I'm supposed to be in Virginia Beach that coming up weekend, so I might could probably make that work.
The 26th, 27th.
Cause that's not far from Virginia Beach.
Right. So 26th, 27th, you think? Okay. Alright, let's try to make that work.
I might be able to make that work. If I'm the only one, I can, I'll, I'll, I'll work something out.
26th and 27th. Alright.
Mr. Chair, I might ask that when, when they, so it looks like the 26th and the 27th, can you let me know whether or not, how you want that to work out? Do y'all wanna come in Friday afternoon and work Friday night and Saturday? Do you wanna come in Saturday morning? What's your time, timing look like on that?
What would be best for you? Coming in like Friday evening? Yeah, I'd like to finish up Saturday as soon as possible if we could. Yeah, come in Friday evening and, and Saturday and, and leave on Saturday evening.
Okay, okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Alright, and we'll, we'll continue to work on the agenda. And I know there's been some, Ms. Dunbar sent me several items that, of interest to her, so if you've got the interest of things on the agenda, then please, please let me know, cause I've been communicating with Rachel and we're, we'll be getting an agenda set for that. Any questions on that? Our next meeting dates, let's see. So remember March 11th. So that's just a few days away, five o'clock here, and then March 25th. Yep. So March 11th, we got a special call finance meeting, March 25th, conflict. Yep, so March 11th, we got a special call finance meeting, March 25th, conflict of interest training, and then special called finance meeting starting at five. And then our next rigor board meeting will be April 8th. All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second. Motion is second, all in favor raise your right hand. All right, thank you all, have a good evening.